There was one years ago in Hawaii before I was actually on, before I started working the paper that I covered. There's some county council who got punished by the same mistake. And the prosecutor got a dissing, but he could only have served jail for a reason. And the judge saw the plea agreement, and he's like, he makes the prosecutor like answer him like the questions about exactly how this was written. And who agreed to this. And I was like, I will prove it because you guys agreed to this. I think maybe there wasn't a reword there about him agreeing with it. But he's like, he just, without ever saying it, he made it very clear on the record and on the newspaper whose ID it was. And it wasn't his.
And that's good for a judge to do that because the prosecutor's doing it every now and then.
Yeah.
Each year, front of the law, expect seven kids, has all been paid, and they don't have to have never had to register.
The, the son of the guy who died at Fonda is a county councilor. So I talked to him a couple of times, and he just thinks Dan just like did his job.
He survived the crime war, but I didn't survive the Fonda case.
Yeah.
It was sad.
It is sad. Oh, was she that night? Gosh, traumatizing. Did you, did you see that one, CNA's got fired, this email from Rockville today? Yeah, it's in this week's paper, but I'm not sure if you've heard about it. I, I know the administrator, Jen Blair, is she still down there or is she like? Cause she has been at like eight places, I swear. She lives in Rockville, so we have kids not in the same grade, but around each other, so we met each other a lot. Sorry, you called her up and told her, don't run your office and then fire her. Of course you're gonna get sued, of course you're gonna go. Yeah, it was an interesting day at court this morning.
This morning?
Yeah. Lady, she was a nurse at the Fonda Care Center and her patient died. A CNA then reported to the states because she didn't suction his tracheostomy. And she has kind of said, no, this was not my fault. And then they kind of pleaded down to a aggravated misdemeanor. There was a plea agreement where Kelly recommended that she, she's like seven. She was just gonna basically retire on her sentence. They recommended a suspended sentence, and the judge was like, nope, two years to the guys. Like, and you just don't sue judges, toss, pull up payments?
Do not, yeah, but why are we letting this fall on you?
Yeah, because, you know, the thing was, they didn't, I don't know how to do this. He had a wear-in jacket, and so it was different, it's one way. And, and they're like, well, then you call, or you don't take the shift. You call your, you call it, cause she's a contractor, you call your boss, and you tell them this is a problem. And like, they're like, yeah. And she did, and she did try to call some people, but she also didn't, the family has her concerns. She, it was six and a half hours asking for his tracheoclastectomy. So like, but they didn't get an autopsy because everybody told him it was a heart attack. So like, it's been wild.
See, if I'm, I prefer it to never go to, not because, well, because I don't think there's people that don't care. There's definitely people that don't care that spend that much money. It's because the administration has what you're doing, it's illegal, whatever. That's the problem.
I don't have anything to like speak, but can we clarify when citywide cleanup days are? I think there's a couple of dates bouncing around. I think on the bills, it was the week of May eighteenth. And then I think I saw in the paper, it's the week of May fifth. I know, okay. The transfer station guy just commented yes, or this morning to me and said that he confirmed that it was for the week of May eighteenth. So. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Move the second, approve the bill on the favor. Discussion on approving the resolution. Twenty-six, twenty, twenty-six, please.
So these are the same sheets that Brent gave us a whole week and a half, two weeks ago. You guys have all seen these. He just put them in light items for us. None of the numbers have changed that he talked about. And then our two postings for the paper, which had to happen ahead of time. It's been posted, it's, yep, everything left. It costs four hundred dollars to post, just for budget, so just.
I'll make the most of it. Also, move the second to approve the budget. Okay, moving on, discuss the resolution sixteen, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six wages.
This is the one with the blue and yellow on it? All they did, oh no, I'm sorry. This is the one we talked about, you guys have seen, with the five percent, the seven percent. The only thing, maybe you didn't notice, is on the back of the library. She just hired two new people, it was gonna start them at ten, but if we raise the swimming pool, she wanted to add a dollar to all her people right now, and then not do anything until. She'll get her five percent because she's sound, but everybody else is part of it. So that puts her with two people at eleven, one at eleven fifty and one at thirteen seventy-three. You can see on the backside of that wages. That's the only part you haven't seen, is that one dollar. And the pool, instead of paying them extra money this year, we are going to, when Justin and Tom rotate their weekends for waste treatment, they're gonna pay you work. They're gonna do it during the day while they're here, so that'll be time they're here. And then on the weekends, they'll get an hour and a half per day, but they do that. Instead of that extra, they were getting three hundred a week. So this'll just be easier for us. And it won't be extra on their paycheck, it'll just be the call.
They're there anyway.
Yeah, they're there anyway. And it's their on-call, so they'll, they have to be around any moment, so. They were both like. Justin and it'll be Tom group. Chad passed up on the option to share. I thought maybe that fifty-five cents, because Kevin got his grade one, has an incentive to give his grade two. Trying to look out for Dave retirement.
There is a jump, right, every last.
Oh yeah, there's a jump. He's gonna get one in treatment and then one in distribution, two in treatment, two in distribution, so. Watch for Dave when he retires, just like Justin having his three, when he retires.
Rika leaves out the cabinet out of your way.
What are we doing here, are we gonna?
We need to approve.
The five percent?
Yep, and seven for the, no, seven is just PD.
Seven is just PD.
And then the dollar for the library.
Discussion or any other questions?
Motion.
Then move the second to approve the, resolution sixteen, twenty-five, wages.
Okay, this is the blue and yellow. I included Walmart's bill from last year, or last month. We pay twelve thousand nine thirty-one seventy-three a month, right now we're on. Every two, yeah, so if you look on this other page, alternate is what the team hopes will go in. It's a sixteen point seventy-two percent decrease, and we'll be paid a month. It would be no money out of their pocket anymore, out of their paycheck. We would cover up to four thousand each person on their deductible. And it's still less than what we're paying out now. So the only thing we have to worry about is if somebody had a heart attack or back surgery or something, then put them over that four thousand.
So what is, explains, so what is the difference?
Yep, so right now, we pay twenty-four, one-ten, twenty-two a month.
To Walmart?
Yes, plus we cover five hundred dollars of their deal. What I'm suggesting is, we no longer take anything out of their checks. We pay sixteen percent less, us as a city, and we cover up to four thousand dollar deductible as they turn in their receipts. So if they don't go to the doctor, it doesn't cost anybody. If they have something major, then I have to see receipts, and we would pay up to that four thousand. Four thousand is a single deductible, family deductible is eight thousand. So even those with a family, once they hit the four thousand, they know they would have more to pay, but nothing's coming out of their check. So it would be a balance as far as their budget too. So it wouldn't break them by leaving that alone. But this covers that gripe that we always hear when we're trying to hire. You know, county pays for this, Lorenz pays for this, Fonda pays for this, now we will too. Yep, this is what Lorenz and Fonda both do. It's kind of like a higher risk policy, we're banking on people not getting. Yep, yep. I think it's cheaper in the long run, as everybody, as long as everybody has.
As long as, everybody keeps track of it on both ends, right? So we have any given receipt, somehow they have to know how much they got left.
I have, I keep a spreadsheet. You can bring in a third party to do that, but then we're saving no money, because we have to pay out. This probably needs to be voted on, because we're doing wages and everything at one time. It won't go into effect until September.
So it's up to we can look into a little bit more.
Weekend if you want to, I mean.
PD, any, any?
Well, again, that's our huge thing, we're non-competitive, we've not been competitive, I mean, at the five-eighty-five level. Again, this is what I'm used to, and fond of, this is like, everybody got there, I know Lorenz, who said does the same thing. You know, for me to hire people, so like, you know, we had Josh Kuna, there was a multitude of kids, for instance. That's problematic for him, you know. Any family member person coming in here, you know, five-eighty-five a month is a lot. You know, whereas this type of policy at least leverages, like Laura's saying, that first four thousand is so important even. And then you're only still remaining, remember, that's seventy-thirty. So that's four thousand, that thirty percent, you know, coming in. So you're actually covering a much bigger bill, right? So it definitely helps a lot more, you know, keeps more in their pocket. And yeah, and then if it is getting to that major side, then, you know, we can, you know, then people, we have to deal with that, right? But at least, very rarely, I was gonna say in Fonda, did we ever, ever touch, go over that initial paydown, the four thousand, that four thousand, you know. Again, only if you have that unlucky moment, but there again, that is still seventy-thirty, right?
That's what we do, right, we buy down the four thousand, and then after the four thousand goes seventy-thirty.
Seventy-thirty, then, they're paying up to four thousand, another four thousand is on the responsibility of this board. Right, which is still cheaper than what we're paying now at six thousand, plus then we have a deductible at seventy-thirty. So, you know, effectively, you can spend fourteen thousand dollars for an employee, and that's just not, I mean.
Plus you're taking it out of your check. That's the thing, at least this way, we wouldn't be hitting them in the month and the bills, it's how. And it saves us in the long run.
Cause it's crazy when you look at the sheet, also you see how much it goes up, how much money goes up, and then you do the major medical, it's twenty thousand dollars. You know, so put that twenty thousand dollars into an account, you know, to leverage against four thousand dollars, your chances of busting out.
And it certainly do help save.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's exactly.
Another discussion?
Four thousand, HMO four thousand.
HMO four thousand.
Thank you, thank you. The guys will be happy. There is also short-term disability. It's four hundred and fifty-eight a person, this protects everybody once they've missed eight days. So if they break an arm, twist an ankle, something, they would keep them out, they would get paid sixty-six percent of their salary after eight days. Where right now, we have nothing. We don't have FMLA because we have less than fifty people. So this just saves them burning up all their own vacation or some time.
Like a big winter chicken dinner?
It's just like VSP, we would pay.
Is this part of that?
It's part of it. I just want you to know that we were.
I didn't understand.
Then I just wanted you to know, Lola's buying a printer, not that it's a big deal. Lola's buying a printer where we lease ours, so she just wanted to make sure council knew that we're spending thirty-seven hundred dollars for the library. We pay fifty-six hundred for a lease. No, for the two years. So we pay ninety a month, plus we pay by the company, where she doesn't have to pay any. Cause the library prints way.
You get service, right?
They get a copy.
If it breaks down?
Yes.
They come to fix it for free.
I think it's three years. The one she's had now, she's had nine years. Yeah, and it barely, barely talks to the internet. It's an anti. It's getting to the point where she can't even get to it anymore. Wasn't me.
He tried it, he said, they're all there, let me try.
Okay.
Yes.
Greg?
Yeah. My turn?
Yep.
Okay, you're the quietest bunch of broad fuckers I've ever seen. Three cops was a really good thing, Alex. But I'm not pissed about anything. Donna did show up, so I'm gonna need three cops. No, I'm really not upset, I, um, we're in the process of buying that lot out there in various states. And, um, I had some problems with the contract I was submitted, and, um, I really didn't have that big of a problem until I talked to your lawyer, and I really don't like lawyers, so that kind of sent me off the wrong way. I got a clarification on it, and I talked to Laura, and he's come through and kind of blocked that thing. What I was concerned about was I give you all this money, and then you don't give me a deed, I really don't own it, okay? It says you're gonna close, but a closing means you're gonna get a deed. And you always kind of allude to when you get the deed, it's kind of like when the house is done, or, you know, it never really, in my opinion, was that clear. And I wasn't that comfortable with it. So she's gone back to him and said, and the terms of the contract are, I'm gonna give you another five thousand dollars tonight. We're gonna close June first with the balance, and I get a quick claim deed, I'll do all that stuff. I bought and sold part of their real estate. Let me make it perfectly clear, I don't think you guys are trying to cheat us in any way, shape, or form, but, gotta kind of prove to them that you actually own it, and then I give you the money, I wanna own it. I don't want you to, you know, watch over me. There are some things in the contract that says, okay, if you don't think something's right, you go back. You've got thirty days to cure, and if not, can't cure it for you, you get your money's back, I'll put it that. The part that concerns me is the eighteen months, okay? And I don't know if any of you, or I know you guys have, ever had, tried to have a house built here. These guys all think it takes a year, okay? Now, where I come from, it doesn't take a year, but this is what it takes here, okay? It's not gonna change. Weather has a big effect on it, if you look at the timeline, I'm gonna have to go through two winters. I don't know what's gonna happen, but we're gonna make, we'll probably be where we need to be when we need to be there, okay? I'm not really that concerned about it, but there's, things can happen, you know? I'm sixty-eight years old, if I get sick, she's not gonna live here, she'll probably go live with her kids, down with her kids. There's all that kind of stuff, but if I own it, she can get rid of it. And I, and I think she's satisfied from that standpoint. The big catching point, I told Cody and Dick this when we first came in, I told Brian, I haven't talked to the other guys. You take somebody's money, and you put all this in escrow, they don't own it, okay? You still, you got their money, you're not gonna cheat them, okay? We're probably in a better position, the people that have already bought pay are in better positions to go out and take care of what we can take care of. What I'm concerned about is you have people that might be able to come up with a down payment, or a down, not a down payment, buy the lot, get ready to go, and they go to the bank, and they wanna borrow money to build this house. They're gonna wanna know that you own it, okay? And maybe you need to talk to a banker to figure out what you'd have to do for them, but I'm pretty sure they're gonna tell you if they don't own it, or not own enough of the money. And everybody in this room's dealt with bankers before, we sit on the way it is. You know, I think, I think your lawyer was truly trying to watch out for you, I really do, okay? All, all this being a lawyer aside, I think he was trying to watch out for you. But sometimes there are unintended consequences that even they don't think about, and that was the first thing that came to my mind, is that, we've got a house, it's sold, now our house is paid for, everything that comes out of it's ours. If it doesn't sell, and I wanna build this house, I may have to go get a bridge loan at the ground, which I'm pretty sure I can get. If I don't own that property, they're not gonna give me a bridge loan against that land. Put that all together to where they can own that property, or they might give me a second mortgage on my house or something like that. And I hope you guys understand what I'm trying to tell you. And I'm not gonna ask for a shorthand of who actually read that thing. But I think there's two of us in the room, and I'm looking at one of them right there. Obviously the other one, okay? It's okay, but, um, it almost says what you wanted to say, but doesn't really say what you wanted to say, right? And he's a master at writing it that way, and I'm old enough and smart enough to know that, that's what he did it on purpose. So, you guys got any questions for me? I have house plans, and unless my dear wife here, who I love very much, changes her mind.
So your, your relief is what?
My relief? When I close on the first of June, I get a deed, okay? It's mine, okay? He's, he does, he's not reading this room correctly, and I don't mean this room, but this community, okay? We don't have anybody here that's gonna speculate on lots in various states, okay? I love this town, we plan on staying here, we're not from here, but, probably not gonna have some guy come in from outside and buy a couple of lots by the golf course, and expect to make a whole bunch of money off of it. What you need to be concerned about, the way they more run here is, hey, these lots are this price. We're gonna let these assholes sit on these for a while, and we'll see when they wanna sell them short and get out of them, okay? I'm not that guy, it's a fair price for the lot, I'll pay the fair price, and I'll try and live up to everything that's supposed to be there, you know, along the way. But that's my relief there, is to say that, okay? You might have any questions? I really appreciate you having three cops, you'd really be, you're welcome.
Anything's free.
What's that, Gary?
Um, Lauren, were you gonna mention to him, you know, we do have a plan, but it may not be set in stone that by the fifteenth of?
No, she's.
That's okay.
That you talked about, you were gonna.
Yeah, I talked to her this morning.
If we didn't have it set in stone by the middle of May, it was fine.
That's okay.
Okay, because this is a good one, that it. It's a good one.
But I'll come in, or I can do it now, or I'll come in tomorrow morning to pay, or I'll bring her with me, and we'll sign all the contracts, and everything is cool. I just think everybody really needs to read that over, and kind of understand what's going on, or, like I said, he was a nice enough guy on the phone, but I'm not impressed with the fact that you've been a lawyer for thirty-seven years.
If he does say that right now, I mean, that's funny.
Well, I, I do the fact that a million lawyers at the bottom of the ocean is nothing more than a good start. You have any questions for me?
I have a question overall, so right now, I'm not gonna make sure I understand. Right now, if Greg bought a lot, the money goes into, this is how it's written up originally, right? Greg bought a lot, it goes into escrow, and he doesn't get a deed until.
The house is built.
Built or star started?
Started, and it meets, it meets, it doesn't say that, but it meets, it has to meet all our requirements.
That's what I thought we'd done.
It doesn't say that, it kind of floats, that, see, this is the problem I have.
Yeah, it doesn't come right out and say.
And if you guys are on the council, I don't have any worries, okay? But I don't know if you get somebody on here that says, well, I didn't get it in eighteen months, we got thirty thousand dollars, and he's got a foundation out there, it's ours.
I thought it had been started. But that's not what I.
Okay, what's the definition of started?
Well, that's what I was telling, if you pour the concrete, that's started.
That started, if you broke the ground, you put in footage.
So what if it took you another eighteen months to get it done?
No, I get that, okay? I know what your definition is, is that you walk out the door, profile on your face, started to somebody else, or whatever. And I don't think it says started anywhere, cause I've read it several times.
Well, that's.
Well, that's how we've been saying.
I, well, I thought that's what we all agreed on upon, was as long as it was started.
Just read it, find the only point about, I'll apologize, okay?
It doesn't say direct.
So maybe we should change it.
We could get some more checks, you bet.
Yeah, my question is, so when does that lot go to your name? June first, but I mean, anybody's lot, not your lot, say whoever.
Buy another lot.
Yes, when does it go into their name, when they started, when they start?
When, once it's started.
That's the way I go.
Yeah, but we. But if, if you gotta go borrow the money, the bank, the bank's not gonna want your money to start a house, then you don't have.
Oh, we got enough, Donna and I got enough ready cash.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not saying you, I'm saying they're.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
We're older, you never have any money until your kids are gone.
I, I'm just saying this, you look up Beacon right now.
That's true.
These lots are in their names and the houses aren't started.
Mm-hmm.
Why is, why is that if it's not?
That shouldn't be that way, 'cause that's not what it says. Who?
Boom.
Who?
Boom.
Yeah, if you own Beacon, anyone that owns a lot, even if their house is started or not, it's obviously in their name.
No wonder they didn't buy out their deed. And I told her straight away, I just believe those people.
I mean, they're already in their name, so it's not.
They've got to be.
Isn't there something to mention too? If you hired local contractors, none of them are ready to start your house?
No, no, I'm questioning it because I look at that.
Like I said.
So basically, we have nothing, we don't.
We have to assume.
So what do you do? Do you give their money back after eighteen months? Do you keep their money? In there it says you can keep your money.
But how, if the house is, the lot's already in their name, how do we do that?
Then you can't, that's what I'm trying to tell you. You will get sued from here to next week. I'm not afraid of this, so you know.
No, I'm just saying, we need, we need to look into this more.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point this out to you.
Yeah.
I've done this a lot, and I worked for a railroad, I was in, I also helped in real estate and, um, industrial development and stuff. Bankers. You couldn't drive a street bin, ask for a sledgehammer, okay? Excuse me, but that's the way they are. The more money it is, the worse they get. Now, Don and I, you know, if she decides on this plan, I mean, what can you put a foundation in? There you go.
Young people.
It's a firm middle-of-the-road position on addition right now.
Well, it's busy.
I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Cody, what can you put ahead?
I'll, I'll put the foundation you want. A foundation or that foundation? You want started or you want that started?
I'll probably put up a freaking mailbox and that's called started.
There you go, well, there you go.
We don't have that.
That's not in there either.
He was trying to watch out for you, so he made it very ambiguous, okay? So would you, we need to go do a pre-clarification then? It's not really that long, guys. It's not really that long. So you look at that one section, I'm going like, it's gonna close this day and this day. You go, close, close means you get the deed, and it's kind of like.
It sounds, it sounds like to me that the contract really isn't saying what actually is happening.
Yes.
I guess, because the lot's already in their name, but the contract isn't saying that.
You go try and take it away from them and see what you get.
Yeah.
You start taking people's stuff away from them. When they spend money, they're gonna have to borrow, what do you best, and I like to say someone who has.
They got money in the basement, ready for the seizure.
So we need to find out, one, talk to them and find out, and two, um, find out how we can follow the rules in the first place.
No, you trust them, okay?
Well, however they got deeds, however.
You trust them, and he, the first thing he said to me was, I got a million of these out there, and I called Brian Buskey. I said, have you read this? They might be a little bit sour grapes, okay?
Yeah.
First of all, we should have hired somebody local, 'cause they know how to read the room, okay? But I'm not blaming anybody, okay? You know, it's like, yeah, a million of them out there, I asked Ryan, would you sign this? And he goes, no way, okay? No, he's a lawyer. Okay, I trust you guys way more than he trusts you. I know you wouldn't really think you'd cheat, okay, but, harder, but it's, when you read it, it's not bad. And they, they put this legal ease in there and you're going like, what the hell is this? Why, why can't you just say what you mean by saying it, okay?
It's their lingo.
It's a lingo.
Open lingo.
Okay, so, probably already took more time than you really wanted me to, but I, that's where we are. We're gonna execute a contract, we're gonna close June first, we're gonna work like hell to have it done by December or whatever, twenty twenty-six or seven, whatever the date is, okay? It's not our intention to do anything else. If we have a problem, we will come back to you and we will lay it out for you. You have a lot of leeway according to this contract, you have a lot of discretionary power. It does say that in the contract, okay? I read it. The only assignment I ever was told to read and I read.
But if, but if the lot's in your name, you gotta follow the contract.
I would try to though.
I know, that's what I'm saying, you would try to, but I'm saying, if we have an illegal, if you were, to enforce you to follow that contract, it's a litigable thing.
The only person that would be encouraged when that happened is two lawyers.
Yeah.
And who wants to do that?
Yes. I, 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 I would.
With me?
Yep.
That's where we are. It's, it looks nice, looks, it is official. I've got a million of them, I got a million of them running all over the place, I'm all right. It doesn't really seem, it says stuff, but it doesn't say the stuff that you wanna hear, like, okay, you won. And then I find out to you, and, 'cause I thought, you know, those guys, they're not that, they're more a student than that. Merle Holfing, he was a banker, okay?
So Sally.
Yeah, all of them, it's, yeah. They wouldn't do that, I didn't, I couldn't get it, I, I didn't understand. What did they know that I don't know? So what she got is toilet paper, just to put it on the roll. That's it, any more questions? To end up with a discussion that we will continue with it that way.
We need to look, or rephrase a lot of that.
Just. Do you wanna have bloodshot on some of these guys, I'll, I'll read it to you.
Is that contract, the original contract from getting the various states or is it something?
It's not.
It's a.
First, I'm sure.
He, he took the new one and.
Twisted around what he did.
To this one, yes.
Well, that's not what was our intention. You had eighteen months to get started.
Okay.
Okay, not finished, started.
So I'll go find an original contract.
But you, but you say, it doesn't even say that in there.
Not that I saw, did you see that?
Not in this one.
You, you don't see.
See in that? Got that thing, it says completed.
Right.
So, so it does say, uh, completed.
But. When we originally had it set up, I know it was, when you spent, you had eighteen months to get started, 'cause the biggest, uh, talk or discussion was, well, Chris, it takes a year to build a house, move.
Let alone finding a contractor was one of the other.
Right, you said.
Yeah.
And, and, and Don and I talked to a contractor that we're good friends with this weekend, we've got some other stuff set up. You know, we got a, what'd you call?
Should've gone.
She's in work, she's, she's great.
Go back and take it off.
I mean, and we got some other stuff lined up, it's not like we're gonna do anything, but I know how it is around here. Weasel words. That's where we are.
Yeah, you gotta find out how the deeds got found, I could do that.
And where they come from. 'Cause they're just putting plain deeds, is what it says they're gonna do. You mean, you don't even provide a, uh.
No.
Warranting.
Warranting. No warranty, no.
No, Katie, have we talked about that in the past? You put plain deeds, is that?
That's between you and your attorney, to be fair.
I know, but didn't you meant to say something about?
Absent.
Most times a buyer.
Maybe that was.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah. Most times a buyer is gonna ask for a special warranty deed, and some of it is because of what Greg has already mentioned, that you want to be able to prove to the bank that you own the lot, you're, they're. Not that that's a stopover, just as your attorney about the difference between the two.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, I'll leave these plans tonight, you guys, and I'll come in in the morning, and I will.
Yeah, be fine, I'll be here.
Even looking at mid with the lot, it was four, five, twenty-four, it was in there, they, they don't start until middle of summer.
Four, five, twenty-four, so April is.
It's in April, they didn't start up their house.
And they're technically phase one.
No.
They're phase two, it's two, that all happened before.
These are all the lots in phase one.
Yeah, I thought it was just part of it, and it's phase two.
They don't start until summer, around that time.
Right about the start.
And they're buying for rooms.
Yeah.
These guys are.
It was last summer, July, June, July. Okay. All right.
Hey, um. So what up?
Yes, so we moved Kyle up, he's going to training and doing what he needs to do. I have shadowed two people, they were both local. One of them jumped right in, did the daily advisor, missed it by ten cents, went back and found it and fixed her home here. That's who I want. She would be full-time, forty hours a week, seven thirty to four, just like that. Ninety-day.
We hire her, we should have.
That should be a full city hall.
We should always have someone here to answer phones.
Yes, we'll rotate launches.
Yeah, so, well, I mean, I view on vacation or someone else, it's always should be said.
Oh, yes, yes. So if you guys are okay with that, I will offer, yes, this one's full-time. Yep. We started part-time, but then the more Kyle and I got to looking at it and the training he still needs, and the training I need and all the other pieces, we better get everybody.
Hard.
It's hard. So if you guys are okay with that, I will offer, I'm pretty sure she'll take it.
I'm pretty sure she's a local girl.
Yes. She married local, she's from a tumble, she has her bachelor's degree, so she can write a paper, she can run a company. There's just nobody with city experience.
Please.
So can I do the over on that?
Uh, real quick, um, we've been talking about it, Laura's working on getting the ordinance thing up and running, um, so we didn't get our ordinance. We have to, there's a form that has to be filled out. What I'm giving you now is your homework, that I love to give you guys. Um, this is basically the primary sections that we get into trouble with, or that people complain about, people get upset about. Um, from the snow parking, we wanna maintain what it is, which really doesn't work for the, doesn't work for the city and it doesn't work for the police department. Uh, some of the other ones, like the street parking for semis, you know, if we're not gonna sign the whole town, how do we deal with that? Um, the code is very ambiguous as far as what can park where in four hours, but that's unloading or unloading maybe. I just want continuity and all that, so this is basically vicious dogs, pit bulls, uh, detention of animals, how we deal with that. Uh, some of these rules, of course, have been picked up over the years and never really modified. Um, looking through the code and actually knowing what commissions you've authorized, are they still valid? I'm not saying they are, they aren't, you know, like obviously the airport commission will always be the airport commission, but my concern is, there may be something else in there, or is there, you know, something missing or not? Um, cigarettes and tobacco, for instance, I don't even know why we have a code on that as far as enforcement goes, because it's, it's state federal, there's no reason to have it. Um, some people are upset about curfew, I get that one all the time, animals with bars and leashes. Uh, just kind of running through the big ones, the open burning rules, the fireworks rules. Um, the state of Iowa, I don't think they were gonna get that through this year because they were gonna take all that power of fireworks away from cities again and say that you can, which obviously I greatly appreciate the way Book of Arms does it personally, um, having deployed it to a combat zone, however, and then after we have the dead dog. So, um, there's good reasons not to allow fireworks, there's plenty of other places to go. Um, and why not? So basically, this is just campers in yards, you know, God, I get that one all the time, and it's like, the code uses the term vehicles. So you can't park a vehicle on the street, so, and Cody had mentioned the one trailer issue, but the code specifically says, you can't park a vehicle on the street for longer than one position for more than twenty-four hours. A trailer and a camper is not a vehicle, it has to have, unless it has a motor, that's not a vehicle. So, the code doesn't really delineate some of that stuff. So if you park your camper in the backyard, take a guess what, as long as the tire's up and it doesn't look like a property maintenance problem, they can be there. And I'm not saying we do change it, I'm just saying, that's where the soul searching in this council needs to come. Must be codified this new book to start going in there and making some corrections or how we really do it, you know, just like you're talking about on your, your, uh, contract for the lots out there. Everybody knows what they thought it was, but then what actually isn't right is. So, is to start looking at this, but these were my topic ideas for you, um, just to think about, you know, um, as you go through. So, that's the big one there. Um, Tyler will be going part-time, so he is not going to resign, he's gonna stay on part-time, um, and help us out. He'll be going to Palo Alto, he's not allowed to work part-time for six to eight weeks while he's in her field training, but he'll just drop down, so we're gonna be going short. I have four in this, what I call the shoot right now, that have all shown interest for varying positions, alls I can say is I'm very lucky. Um, I have a lot of people, and they're all local people, so these are all people that have either gone to school here, I have an eighteen-year-old person that is, um, went to school here and then went to Wisconsin. Dad, I have a local, um, truck driver that's interested, um, who's physically fit enough to pass the test, you know? So, actually, our numbers are looking pretty healthy, so, um, Dean, I don't know. CD ran a mile and a half, uh, vice versa, so, so that's kind of, we're looking at that. So we're actually, but a lot of it is because salary helps, the insurance helps, so I really appreciate all of that.
Appreciate your local, um, emphasis.
Yeah, it's tough, because you know, and you wanna trust the kids from the tumble, right, or, I mean, I'm not, just 'cause I heard their names, so. You know, but we know what the reality of that is, you know? And I, I wanna see them go somewhere, I wanna see them go to like the state, I mean, spend some time here and go somewhere, you know, randy, so. Hit back home.
I just appreciate the local service. So, you'll have a lot. Clerk?
Clerk, he's at training until Wednesday. This is so he can dig into those meters a little bit further, this is their IEM. An administrator, my only thing was hiring the utility billing firm, she'll give two weeks' notice in Sac City. And if they make her work for two weeks, she's not sure, if not, she'll be there. Counsel?
Is that you, the administrator?
That's my administrator.
Amy? Amy?
Counsel? So, uh, Alex doing, uh, this whole lease thing as a special.
The special tomorrow, like, you know?
One, I won't get it again, but two, uh, I think, in my opinion, that should be agenda, I don't, I got four of my phone calls today about questions they have and, and that way, uh, people can come and ask, uh, I have questions. So I think a special meeting tomorrow at Newf, I don't agree with that, I guess.
I can't either either, so.
Couldn't ask questions either, and I think, are you gone?
I'm gone.
So, there's three of us gone already.
And this one's sick, so I don't know where he'll be.
So.
What day works for you guys, then I'll go take it down and we'll figure out another day. You guys tell me what works. We can do a special, probably for time, but the next council meeting now is until May then, so.
You don't want to wait that long.
I don't know where that gets to.
I would think a day at four thirty or something, five o'clock or something like that, but not if.
I'm just saying, when, when is Lorentz meeting?
Tonight.
Right.
So day certain?
If it doesn't, if it doesn't pass through Lorentz, there's no reason for us.
Yeah, it's gonna pass.
I know, but I'm just saying, if it doesn't.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I actually have a text message, so.
So they're in the meeting?
Yeah, no, it's done deal.
Oh, so, okay, so, so we can, that's what you get.
Rover, are you headed, you're headed east?
I just think we need some discussion. I'm around, I'm around, I'm agreeing, but.
Is there a date certain?
When are you back?
The sooner the better. Or, I'd rather get this, you know, there's varying things that are inging upon us, and that's what we need to answer, so.
That's what I'm concerned about.
So, so when, so I guess Wednesday, you know, but I do agree to give the public the opportunity, I would much rather see that at all, so, you know, I, I don't like that move either. So I would say four thirty-five, whatever, five o'clock on Wednesday.
Actually, Thursday, I can't be here.
Okay, time will do it Thursday.
Rover, you'll call in?
I can.
Thursday at five, 'cause you're not heading back until when?
In there tomorrow.
No, I'm saying back.
Well. Thursday, be late Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
Probably Friday.
Okay.
Yeah. If they're on, do a Thursday at five.
Okay, Thursday, are we okay Thursday at five? Okay. Okay, I will update our postings. Just everybody's okay, are you around Thursday now?
Yeah, I'll be here Thursday.
Okay, maybe John, he'll feel better.
Do anything to change that date, or can we just?
No, I'll just run around, take it all down, and then reprint it, go put it back up. I can do it, I got it. Okay, very last thing. Oh, okay.
See the picture, the little side of the organ under there?
That's a picture of her up here.
Do you like it? I think it gets a little busy in the letter.
It looks, it might look better, the bigger it is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, uh, kinda, this, this, the courthouse scene right here, I. Is this like a club thing for you? Is this like a barn club thing for you, and have that certain dimension?
Uh. Why, why are you told the law? Decision's been made, so forget it.
Do I have, do I have your signed bills, there's two of them, three of them?
I'm.
Tom's gonna sign.
I gotta find it here, I have it right here.
Okay.
Well, sir. Thanks for placing Peter's bar, sir, wall, or the, the banker's bar.
Yes, I, yes, I talked to him, and he just says they haven't, there's been some, a death, a death sentence, the owners, their mother died, and he just says they haven't had more meetings. It's not for sure when they're gonna have the next more meetings, I was trying to get that back, but then, really didn't have much information. Said, you'd be best to, if you were interested in it, just come up with an offer, offer something, or, or if we're gonna have to do something with, with the new contract. Wasn't much.
Probably quickly, considering heritage chances.
Pretty much what you're talking about.
On my way. So we will have to think about how we wanna tackle that, it's something in writing before heritage, 'cause that's the main public event that we need to know, um, licenses, classes. So we'll keep that on our.